Yes ma'am.
Okay. All right, it's 6:00 PM and I will call the January 4th, 2021 Mayor and Council Meeting to Order. We'll first stand and have our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll remain standing with me, and Councilman Bridges, would you have our invocation, please?
Let us go to God in prayer. Dear great God of heaven, thank you Lord God for this day. Thank you for waking us up this morning in our right mind and our health and strength, the heavenly Father. Thank you Lord for bringing us out of 2020 into 2021. Lord God, just thank you for all that you have given us with your grace and mercy, Lord God. Lord God, I pray for unity in our community, unity in our world, dear heavenly Father, that we would do things according to your will, Lord, and not our own. And Lord, as we go through this meeting tonight, that everything will be done in decency and in order to glorify thee, these and all other blessings. In your dear son, Jesus Christ's name, we all do pray. Let every heart say amen.
Amen. Well, thank you, Councilman Bridges, and Happy New Year to everyone that's here. We're having a sincere prayer that this year is better than last year. All right, at this time, we'll have our citizens' comments. Mr. Triplet?
Thank you, Mayor. This time, I would like to call Mr. Metlane, 214 Habersham Place, Carrollton, to the podium.
Can't remove my mask.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good to see all y'all. Congratulations on a very successful year. Y'all have done great. Thanks for the city of Carrollton in such hard times. And I mean that sincerely. But I'm really here for Jim Waters wishing you a happy birthday. You look good. So I hope y'all will join me. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jim. Happy birthday to you.
Yay. Yeah, that's a dedicated servant when he comes to the council meeting on his birthday night.
This time, I would like to call Mr. Charles Phillips, 552 Alabama Circle, to the podium.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Phillips.
Y'all had a good evening and a Happy New Year coming on y'all. I've got three minutes and I didn't talk as fast as I should have the last time. I'm gonna try to make up for it too, in my case. But listen, I need to get some understanding about a law. I was here before about the lottery that I bought. And I had a problem with the people saying there wasn't no money on the lottery and it were on Maple Street. And I still hadn't got the understanding. I got paid for it later on by the owner. But I had a whole lot of problems. I called the police myself because they was giving me, you know what, and I wasn't getting anywhere with them. So I need to know. The law told me, the police department, when I called them, they said the law says that I had to go to the lottery with it. I bought those things right there in front of me, you know, and I paid my money. They saying that there wasn't no money on them, but they know it had been paid out. And I just bought them in front of them. So we need to see who I need to go see about getting this law changed. Because the police department told me that that's all they could do, is tell me to take it to the lottery. Now those peoples that got my money, and I won off of their tickets, right there in front of them, hadn't moved, been there for 30 minutes, scratching off back and forth. And they said that when they put it under their light, under my light, it showed money, what I told them I had on it. And when they got them, they said that I had been paid off. So I finally got the owner, called him a while ago, and he paid me off though. But it's a problem if somebody else, or myself, had to go through that again. So I need to get that straightened out. And the police department done told me where they stand on that. And that's not good because somebody get hurt off of that. So I need to know who to talk to, to get that changed.
Okay, well, we'll have somebody to be in touch with you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it, and a Happy New Year to you guys.
Jim, did you get his contact information?
Anyone else? That's it? Okay. All right. We have the minutes from the December meetings. We have the regular council meeting and also the work session. So for the council meeting, do I have a motion to accept and adopt the minutes?
As I move that motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, hearing none. Motion carried. Okay, and then for the work session, do we have a motion to adopt those minutes? Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, the minutes for the work session are adopted. Okay, we'll start now with our Mayor and Council announcements. We'll start with Councilman Bridges.
I just want to say thank you to everybody in our city for doing a great job on all the endeavors that we put out in 2020 and looking forward to working with everyone in 2021. Getting the things done that we need in our city. And I just want to say thank everybody for all the good work that we are doing.
I'd second that and specifically like to point out our medical community that has been operating under extraordinary stress here for the last nine months. But, and I think they're still operating under a lot of stress, even though that we've got the vaccine. But, you know, I think there's light at the end of the tunnel with this pandemic and I'd like to thank them for all their efforts. We have a very special guest with us here tonight, but I'm going to leave that for our mayor to mention that person.
All right. Okay. Jim? Brett?
Well, I'd just like to say that I'm very thankful to live in a city of caring people during this time of the year. You really get an opportunity, if you're paying attention, to see how much people care about other people and all the activities that have gone on, all the food that's been distributed, all the people that have, you know, had events and things to help people. And I'm just very thankful to live in a city that that's possible and that that goes on. I'm also very thankful to work with a group of people like Mayor Kason and my fellow city council people. And, you know, it's a group of people that I have come to know and love and have the utmost respect for. And I'm very thankful for all the employees in the city that do the hard labor. I live not a half a mile from here, and so I'm pleased to witness all the hard work that goes on and see people out on a Sunday afternoon, you know, fixing a water line that's broken so that people will have the services that they're paying for. And all the other things that people do that go really unnoticed, and I just wanted to say I was thankful for that. That's all I've got.
Thanks Brett. And that's, this is one of the most giving communities I think I've ever seen, and I think there were so many people who witnessed that during the holidays, the generosity of those that were more fortunate, sharing with those that were less fortunate. I do, talking about our employees, I know some of you may have seen it in the paper, but our water department was recently giving a Georgia First Designation, and I'm sorry, Tim, tell me, there's not very many of them in the state.
I don't know the number, but it's just a handful of all out of the hundreds of water systems in the state.
Yeah.
But our greatest excitement about it is if we do take a loan from GIFA, it may be under 1% interest because of that designation.
And the great thing about it was, a lot of the things that were needed to obtain the designation, we were already doing. So it's not like we had to go out and do things to meet the criteria. The criteria had already been met. And so that's great. I think that says so much for our employees. And, you know, I've always said our employees are so forward-thinking, all of them, and we're so blessed to have them here with us and do the job that they do. Do you want me to introduce him? Okay. We're very pleased tonight to have with us Mr. Patrick Idson. Patrick is going to be starting with the city of Carrollton next Monday as Assistant City Manager. And we all look forward to working with him, and I know he's just going to be another feather in our cap when it comes to employees. And Patrick, we're all looking forward to you coming to work with us and look forward to meeting your family and helping out any way we can to get you settled into Carrollton.
Thank you, Mayor. And council members, I look forward to getting here and meeting the employees and hitting the ground running. And I want to say thank you to Tim for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Okay. Well, that concludes my announcement.
Left that Jim. Did we hear from Jim?
Oh, he passed.
Oh, he passed?
Yeah.
Hey, can I make one more little quick announcement?
Absolutely.
I'm not saying this just because Mr. Edie's in the room, but I don't know how many people have noticed, I think the barrels are all gone on Bankhead Highway, and it really looks good. Yay. I had breakfast out in front of Jerry's Country Kitchen on the patio Saturday morning, and the scenery was just delightful.
Well, you know, things come in time with progress, and the end product is going to be beautiful. Okay, all right. Mr. Grizzard. I didn't forget you this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just several things. One, mentioning Bankhead, and I wish Tommy was here, he'd agree with me on this. We've never done a traffic project where anybody was happy. They're never happy when it's going on, but once it's over, they're usually pleased with the results. So we look forward to that with Bankhead. We just came out of the holidays, and I just want to thank some employees that I think about every Christmas Day. But if, you know, if it's Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, or Christmas Day, there are police working, there are firemen working. There is somebody at that sewer plant, Christmas Eve night and Christmas Day, away from their family, and I think about that. There's somebody at that water plant, so when we turn on the tap, we've got water. So there's so many things that go on around here that don't shut down over the holidays, and those people don't get to go home. And, you know, there are only four crews at either of those plants, so two of those folks are going to be working Christmas Day. You know, they're going to be, somebody's going to do the day shift, somebody's going to do the night shift. So there's not a lot of relief, but I'm really thankful to those people, all our public safety. And again, if there's a main break on Christmas morning, somebody's going to be out fixing it. So we're very thankful for those folks. And then if you think about all the trash you generate, I know all the trash that I generate during Christmas, somebody's got to pick that up, and they're picking that up this week. And so I appreciate those guys. That is a heavy, tough job, and they stay on top of it. And I rarely get complaints, and when I do, it is something that's, that department usually resolves it within an hour. It's not, if they've got a broken trash can or something, or somehow trash got missed, it isn't resolved tomorrow, it's resolved in an hour. So they are that good. So I'm very thankful for those folks. And just for whoever might see this online or on television, I do want to say, I get a lot of questions about, when's the city going to approve some cheaper housing? When's the city going to do something about housing that would be less expensive? I just want to say, we have very little control over the price of housing. We don't set the price of building material, we don't set the price of labor, and I don't know that you can build any dwelling for less than $200,000 now. And I just, I just hope people understand that this body is in charge of zoning. They do have some standards, like the size of a house, but our minimum size house is only 950 square feet, and that's not a very big house. But we really don't control the price of housing, and there's very little that can be done about, that this body can do about that. I will say this, though, interest rates are down in the 2% range, and I'm old enough to remember when it was 14, I'm looking at somebody older than me, 14 and 16%, so there are some opportunities out there that weren't there, you know, that bring that payment price down. But I just hope people understand, we really don't, I say we, this body really doesn't set the price of housing. And I know sometimes people show up at this podium and want everybody up here to do something about that. There's just not a whole lot that they can do. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Well, just to continue that a little bit, there's not to say that we don't recognize the problem and we don't recognize the issue, and that we're not trying to do what we can do. Because I can tell you firsthand knowledge, Councilman Ogum has worked with a recent group that was going out and surveying some people to find out what their needs were and this kind of thing. So it's not that we're not trying to help, it's just that, you know, we just can't go out and build houses. So, but we recognize the issue and we're working on it with community partners, so I will say that. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda items for consideration?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, any removals or additions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay. I'm going to entertain a motion that the Mayor pro Tim appointment, that we table that until the February meeting. If I could get somebody to entertain that motion for me?
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you. That kind of slipped up on me a little bit. Okay, rezoning request for 202 Brumblyow Road. Ms. Erica?
The second item on your agenda is a rezoning request at 202 Brumblyow Road from M1, which is Light Industry, to C2, which is General Commercial. The request is the location of the old TC Rose Restaurant and Bar, and the Planning Commission reviewed this request at their December meeting, and they made a motion to approve the request with two conditions. One, that a concrete sidewalk with landscape islands with curbing be installed along the Brumblyow Road right-of-way. And two, that the parking lot in front of the building be reconfigured to remove any existing parking spaces from the Brumblyow Road right-of-way. When they submitted the rezoning request, they submitted an updated survey, and we were able to catch these things during the process. And I do believe the petitioner is here if you have any questions.
And to clarify, this is not a change of use, it's the use it's had all along, but...
I didn't go into great detail because of the work session. I apologize. Yes, so this, we basically, this arrived on our desk because the TC Rose was in existing non-conforming use. And the way our ordinance reads, if something ceases the use for more than six months, then essentially they've got to come in and rezone and make it right on the zoning map. And that's the case with this one. Brumblyow Road's a hodgepodge of M1 and C2. North of it is C2, west of it is M1. It's really kind of an interesting little corridor that close to the university because it's got pedestrians, but it's also got industrial, which is why we were asking for the sidewalk. But yes, Tim is absolutely correct. This was an existing non-conforming use for decades and decades. I went back, I think to 93, and it was zoned industrial. So, and then whenever TC Rose ultimately closed, the property owners put it for sale, it was shuttered for more than six months, and so they had to come back to us. Sorry about that, Tim.
All right. Thank you, Erica. So from the Planning Commission, it appears they approved it. So do I have a motion to grant the rezoning request?
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there anybody here to speak for or against the rezoning? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Raj Fierakak. I'm actually representing and applying on behalf of the owners.
Okay.
I have interest in this property, so that's why I went ahead and wanted to get the rezoning sorted out before we went any further. We're still currently in contract, and I don't know if I were to pull up, if, I don't know if it's a done deal yet, is what I'm trying to say. So I'm just doing a courtesy favor for them to get the rezoning. So if I'm not the new owner, at least nobody will have a problem going further, which is why the conditions. If I were to take and own the property, we obviously will do our due diligence and go ahead and accommodate with the conditions. However, if it's approved, and you know, and I don't, I will notify a city hall, and that's a conversation that you might have to have with the owner, to let them know that going further, whoever does own it would have to go ahead and, you know, abide by these conditions. So I just wanted to be honest about that.
Mr. Smith?
Well, the rezoning request was made on behalf of the owner, and if it is approved, then the property is rezoned. It's not conditional on your acquiring the property.
Right. I just wanted to be clear that just because I'm the one that's the face of it right now, that we, I'm just doing this as, you know, courtesy. So I do intend on having this rezoning done. I don't know if I will be the owner or not, but what I'm trying to say is, if I were to be, I will go ahead and abide by the conditions, which they will have to do it regardless, but I take, you know, ownership at the current moment.
Right, yeah. The rezoning will have these conditions.
Right.
So whoever, if you're not the owner, whoever buys the property
Right.
would have to conform with these conditions also.
Right.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay. Thank you, though. All right. Any further discussion? Any questions? Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Property be rezoned from M1 to C2. Okay, we have a rezoning request, 190 Burns Road.
The third item on your agenda is a rezoning request at 190 Burns Road. And the request is to rezone the property from OI, which is Office Institutional, to a residential PD, which is a planned development. We went through this request at your December work session. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at their December meeting. And they recommended approval to construct nine one-bedroom cottages contingent upon the following conditions. The project is limited to nine one-bedroom cottages per the binding site plan and that's located in your packet. Haley, if you want to call it up on the screen. And then the requested waivers regarding the building width, the roof pitch, the density and the setback shall be approved. Just real quickly, the building width will go from 16 feet to 12 feet. These are very modern structures, y'all have seen renderings of them, they're also in your packets. They wanted to be able to reduce the roof pitch to a 212 to accommodate that modern architecture. They also wanted to reduce the rear setback to zero due to the 25-foot state waters setback from Lake Carroll. And then they also need a density of 8.3 units per acre to get the nine one-bedroom units in. Should the units be sold individually, an EPD-approved public-grade lift station in Forest Main will be required. These are intended to be rental and they will, they will basically be maintained by a private pump station?
EPD will not approve that, but we're fine with it being private. But to say EPD approval...
Okay, I was just...
It will not be, they won't approve it.
Okay, that's good. I guess then that's been updated, yes, that's fine. So we'll, you know, basically they can't be sold individually. They're intended to be rental and that's that.
All right.
And it was a unanimous approval from the Planning Commission.
Okay, you've heard the request. Do we have a motion to grant this request?
I'd make a motion, we approve the request.
Okay, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Like this is an exciting development. It'll be, it'll look great on the lake over there.
Yeah. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Okay.
Good evening, my name's Brian Preston. Really excited about this project. We've, a little bit about my background, we've been in design, we've had a furniture company. We did all the tables at Mercedes-Benz Stadium. But we also have been messing around with these cottages, micro dwellings, micro units. And so from Carrollton, and really excited to bring a project like this because if you guys do choose to pass it, it could be one of the first ones in the whole country. And I really believe it can become a template for other, for other communities because we're taking property that's, people see as hard to develop or hard to use and really rethink and reconsider what can actually go on property like that. So, but yeah, we really wanted, we feel like it's the first thing you see when you pull into Carrollton, right there on the pond. So it'll be beautiful architecture overlooking the pond there. I think it could be a really great project.
Right.
Well, it definitely will add to the landscape that's there now, so we're excited about it.
Backs right up to the green belt, is that right?
The green belt is on the other side of the lake.
Okay.
Little pond.
Pretty easy access, though.
Yeah, shouldn't be any problem there. Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Preston. All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign, hearing none, motion carries. So congratulations. All right, resolution 01-2021, roadway abandonment of Martin Drive?
This abandonment was discussed at your December work session. It's for .169 acres at the end of Martin Drive. It's an unopened portion of right-of-way. This request was made on behalf of the property owner that purchased the personal care home on Park Place Way. They also purchased the property between this land and the personal care home and they're looking to expand the personal care home. And they would like to include this in their development piece. This is the first step of several towards the abandonment and the sale of the property. If you have any questions, I would probably defer to Huck beyond that.
All right, I think we discussed this at our work session. So do we have a motion to adopt this resolution? Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second, is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Board appointment for the Planning Commission? You should just stay up there.
I just feel underdressed because of Jim, so, Miss Tuxedo. But, yeah, I know, that's actually spot on. Happy birthday, by the way. The final item I have for you tonight is a Planning Commission reappointment. We have two members whose Planning Commission terms expired December 31st. Both Dr. Peter Balaiga and Mr. Eddie Duffy have terms that expire. Dr. Balaiga was originally appointed in 17 and he's actually served one full term. He can serve another term and he has expressed an interest in continuing to serve on that commission. Eddie Duffy was appointed to serve a partial term just one year ago. And so we would like to reappoint him as well to continue so he can get in another full term. They're both eligible for reappointment and they both have expressed an interest if you'll have them. They've been good planning commissioners and they've been assets to the commission and they participate and their attendance is great.
We have two recommendations for reappointment. Is there any other people to be considered?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion or motion to consider another person for Dr. Balaiga's spot. Rich Weaver, who I think most of y'all know, he's normally at the meeting when he's traveling this week. He expressed interest to me of serving on the planning and zoning. I think he would be a good addition. Dr. Balaiga obviously does a great job, nothing against him. He's been, sat in this seat on the council for, I believe, eight years. So anyway, I just want to make that nomination or a motion for Rich Weaver to replace Dr. Balaiga.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to appoint Rich Weaver in Dr. Balaiga's seat. So is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, okay, we'll have Rich Weaver be appointed to the term, the seat now held by Dr. Peter Balaiga. We also have a nomination of Eddie Duffy. Do I have a motion to appoint Eddie Duffy back to his seat?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion or further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay. 2021 calendar of the mayor and council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the meeting that we set our meeting dates for the upcoming year. And so included in your packet is a memo that basically the first Monday of every month, unless that falls on a holiday, then it's pushed out to the following Monday. And then the Thursday work session meetings are all defined. And so we talked about it in the work session and we're just asked that you approve that. And obviously, if something happens mid-year and you need to make a change, we can do that. That happens from time to time.
All right, do we have a motion to adopt the meeting schedule for the mayor and council for the 2021 year?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.